I call the City of Riverbank Regular City Council and the Local River Development Authority meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, April 28, 2015, and it is 6:00 PM. I am Vice Mayor Darlene Barbara Martinez, and our Mayor O'Brien is currently not available with us today. So please rise for the flag. Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for our invocation.
Let us pray. Thank you, Heavenly Father Jesus, for this wonderful day that you've provided for us. Thank you, Heavenly Father Jesus, for the many blessings that you do bestow upon us. We come to you tonight, Heavenly Father, with praise and thanksgiving on our heart, and ask that you come into this chamber, Heavenly Father Jesus, and be with each one of these leaders that you've placed in this position. And Heavenly Father, give them wisdom and understanding. Also, give those that come, Heavenly Father, to voice their opinions, that you would just give them the wisdom, the understanding, the peace, the knowledge of knowing that, Heavenly Father Jesus, that all things are done, if they're done through you, they're done right. And we ask, Heavenly Father Jesus, that you bless them. We ask that you bless this community, bless this great nation that you've given us, that, Heavenly Father Jesus, we might turn to you and look to you as this council governs this city. And we ask, Heavenly Father, that you be with city staff. Just bless each one of them, Heavenly Father. Encourage them, uplift them. Be with our country today. Be with our servicemen wherever they're at. Undergirt them. And Heavenly Father Jesus, let this be a chamber that's calm and peaceful, and all things are conducted in just a peaceful manner, and we'll give you the praise and thanks for it all. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Council Authority Member Janine Tucker.
Here.
Council Authority Member Leanne Jones Cruz.
Here.
Council Authority Member Cal Campbell.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chair Darlene Barbara Martinez.
Here.
Mayor Chair Richard D. O'Brien is absent for the record.
Conflict of interest. Any council authority member or staff who has a direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare the conflict at this time. And I have a conflict with item 5.1. Anyone else? Okay. Presentations, item 1.1, proclamation declaring May as Bike Month in Riverbank. And is Carrie McNichol here? Want to meet me up front there?
Whereas the month of May has been designated as National Bike Month by national, state, and local governments in order to promote greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety education in an effort to reduce accidents, injuries, and fatalities, and whereas the bicycle is an economical, healthy, convenient, and environmentally sound form of transportation and an excellent tool for exercise and recreation and enjoyment of our city's surrounding beauty. And whereas there is a need to promote alternative forms of transportation, such as walking and bicycling, in order to reduce pollution, reduce America's dependence on fossil fuels, and improve the health and well-being of our nation's people. And whereas bicycle commuting is an effective means to improve air quality, reduce traffic congestion, conserve energy, and improve personal health. And whereas bicycle commuting is an integral part of a multimodal transportation system as planned for by county, state, and local transportation government agencies. And whereas the education of cyclists and motorists as to the proper and safe operation of bicycles is important to ensure the safety and comfort of all users. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Riverbank does hereby proclaim the month of May as Bike-to-Work Month in the City of Riverbank, and in doing so, encourage all residents to recognize the importance of sharing our streets and highways with cyclists and to participate in bicycling and walking activities to whatever extent possible during the month of May. This is presented April 28, 2015. Thank you. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure, thank you.
Okay.
I think she said most of it. There were plenty of words on there. But I do want to say, I am from a group today called Commute Connection, and we're a program of the Stanislaus Council of Governments, as well as those in San Joaquin and Merced. And we exist to help employers and communities promote alternative transportation. Bike-to-Work Month is obviously a big part of that. And to that end, we are offering a commuter challenge, so anyone who pledges to bike or walk to work or transit during the month of May is eligible for prizes. Everybody loves prizes, and more information on that challenge can be found at valleybik commute dot com. And we have lots of resources to help the cities promote that, help employers promote that, and we just want to be available, to be a resource to you as you work to promote biking and walking in the City of Riverbank. And thank you for your time tonight. I do have a few small posters. I'll set on a chair in the back for anyone who might be interested on their way out. Thank you.
Did you get your picture? You okay? Good?
All right. Thank you.
Public comments. No action can be taken. At this time, members of the public may comment on any item not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of five minutes per person, and each person may speak once during this time. Time cannot be yielded to another person. Under state law, matters presented during the public comment period cannot be discussed or acted upon. For record purposes, state your name and city of residence. Please make your comments directly to the City Council LRA Board. Do we have any public comments?
Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Ramon Bermudez from Riverbank. More details on Roselle Avenue. I have two items in here. One of them is to clarify a letter about Lavco that Mr. Mayor Richard O'Brien, unfortunately, he's not here, to hear what is the good news. The good news is that a person with the name Marjorie Olson Blom from Turlock put the law is clear, Bigman was writing a letter. Bigman should resign from Lavco. He put on it as part of the other city mayors, like five other cities that acted regularly, to say the least. The comments of the writer, a former member of Lavco, are contrary to the Court of Test and Nots Hersford Act, Lavco Law, pursuant to government code section 56, 325.1, which states, "While serving in the commission, all commission members shall exercise their independent judgment on behalf of the residents, property owners, and the public as a whole. In furthering the purposes of this division, any member appointed on behalf of local governments shall represent the interests of the public as a whole and not solely the interests of the appointing authority." Unfortunately, he's not here to hear the good news, that there is even a law on that together with his other fellow mayors should learn a little bit before they make statements like the ones they did so unfairly towards one member, but not towards the other two that also voted yes, who are two supervisors of Stanislaus County. In other part, this lights were installed, LED project that they had in Modesto. I'm hoping that all of you, city council people, vice mayor, city manager, the staff in here, or the City of Riverbank will get, one way or another, eventually within the next two years, or maybe less, a project like this not only saves energy. Part of the city, the newer part, I could call it, is with LED lights. All of the old Riverbank, including where I live, is the old fluorescent lights, or excuse me, the other incandescent lights. And if it is cheaper in the long run, why not get started a project before it gets more expensive on products and labor? And if it is much better, I'll give you a good example. Right on the first corner going on Morel from Roselle, where I live, going west, the first corner, I want to say Willowood, but I'm not sure, it has a light, or the modern ones, LED light, really bright, it's really a beauty. You can almost see like daylight. And yet, right across the street, it's not the corner, but it's the glowing straight part, there is one of the regular lights, or the old incandescent lights, and it looks so horrible, the big part of, you want to see the opposite too, is right there in that intersection. Another one. The request of the city, or either a request to make it as soon as possible, the light on Patterson Road has been fixed for a week. I had talked to PG&E directly, telling them, that's not an emergency, but it is urgent that you repair that as soon as possible. They did it within two weeks. When the City of Riverbank calls, Mr. The person in charge here takes about six to eight weeks, and that's a horrible timing. I told them at PG&E, mostly on a light like that, they did it within two weeks. When one citizen bothers to call the phone number, the direction, where is the address where he sat, and he gets better results, it's a shame. Because that corner, Howard, with Patterson, there was a man run, I haven't read anything in the paper lately, about what happened to him, was hurt belly being run over by a vehicle. And as I had talked to Mr. Jill Anderson about the matter, one of the factors is dark in there. And it was about 8:15, darker still. Even with the light that was replaced, almost in the front of the small car wash type of thing, it's not close to the corner enough, nor even with the regular light. It doesn't light. I have passed a few times already through there, anywhere between 8:00 and 9:00, and it's not lit enough in there. It's dark. Really simple. Last night, I went to drop off a friend on the other side of Morel, on Saxon actually, and I made a turn in there, and I almost missed it because it's so dark. And I'm familiarized. I mean, if it would have been a late time, I'm pretty sure it wouldn't have happened. But I'm pretty much familiar with the area after 21 years here, and it needs a light in that corner. One way or another, do whatever you want to do, please have mercy on us. Sometimes I am not daring to walk through there anywhere after 5:00 in the afternoon because of the same reason, it's too dark. I thank you very much for listening, and I hope you do something about it very soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Governor McRitchie, Riverbank, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Riverfest, we had that this last Saturday, and a lot of kudos go to Sue Fitzpatrick and her staff, especially Carrie, and a few of the city council people who are working very hard to drive fire trucks and provide food and different things like that. So it was well appreciated. It's a lot of fun. They have things for little guys. They had climbing walls, they have the bow and arrow shoot, a train, all kinds of things. And a lot of our vendors were there, so got a chance to give them an earful or a kudo. So it was really a very nice thing. Too bad it rained all night before, but. One other thing I have, some, I think it's years ago, I don't have a good memory anymore. We received a grant for Wi-Fi in our city, and it was one of three cities, Pico down by Los Angeles, San Francisco, and Riverbank. And we had a big to-do out at Jacob Meyer Park. There's a need for Wi-Fi. I don't know if we can get it at the community center. I think the teen center probably has it, but there's no place where you could sit, have a cup of coffee, and have the Wi-Fi. At the Housing Authority, we did go after it, and we found there was no money, there was no organization, there was no nothing there. So we threw in with AT&amp;T, and we now have Wi-Fi for all our 9E residents. We also arranged for $200 laptop computers for them and a class to learn how to do this stuff. It's too bad, but there was some pretty good dough there, and it's not, I think, the city that's abusing it. I think it just dried up. I don't know how, if the vendors ate it up with their operation expenses or whatever, but we never got anything out of it. And it was a pretty good grant, and it's really done a world of good for the Housing Authority where we have it, and I miss not having it downtown. And that's what it was supposed to be, the whole downtown is supposed to be wired. So that was that. I think I'm done. Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? They move on to the consent calendar. Item 3A, wave readings. Item 3B, approval of the March 14, 2015 special city council minutes. Item 3C, consideration of continuing the declared emergency for the 7th Street Storm Drain Outfall Line destabilized embankment. Do we have anyone on city council wishing to pull any of the items on the consent calendar?
I just have one comment, Vice Mayor. I wasn't here on the March 14 meeting, so I will abstain from the section, item 3B, abating on that particular section.
Thank you. So note it. Anyone else? Do we have anyone from the public wishing to pull any of the items on our consent calendar?
Item 6.5, consideration of fireworks application from Inox High School Music and Guard Booster.
Okay, we're only talking about the consent calendar items 3. A, B, and C right now.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. Thank you. Okay, so I bring it back to the council for discussion or action.
I'll move that we approve the consent calendar.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Council Authority Member Campbell. You will abstain from 3. B.
Yes, on 3A and 3C, but abstaining from 3B.
Council Authority Member Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chair Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Hey, we do not have any unfinished business, so we're moving on to item 5, public hearing. And item 5.1, which I already stated that I have a conflict of, so we need to, should I read this part, or?
Actually, that's going to be, we have one correction. We need to.
Should she select another person to sit in for her as acting mayor so she can step down from the dais due to the conflict?
Yeah.
Okay.
Before or now?
Okay. I will excuse myself.
Would another member of the city council like to take over for this particular item? Councilmember Campbell, it looks like you have been selected to take this over.
Councilmember Cal just volunteered.
I have to wake up.
Put your nose on first.
And councilmembers, again, on this item, we're not continuing the public hearing, we're just continuing consideration of the resolution, so I just wanted to clarify that. That was some extra language included there.
Joe, should I read the article, the item?
Yes.
Yes.
Item 5.1, continue the public hearing, oh, you said we're going to discontinue that, right?
Continue the resolution.
Read it the way it is. Continue the public hearing to consider the resolution approving the general plan amendment to, one, modify the land use designation of 83 properties to match the goals and objectives of the DTSP. Two, to modify the general plan circulation diagram to be consistent with the recommendation of the planning commission for a PED overpass, that's the connection between the downtown area and the cannery site. Three, approval of the downtown specific plan. And four, second reading of the ordinance rezoning the downtown specific plan area to SP3 to the city council meeting of Tuesday, May 12, 2015.
You're good there. Then just take any comment and then a motion to continue the item.
Do I have any comments from the council?
No.
Okay, then I will open it to the public.
Governor McRitchie, again, from Riverbank. I'm a little concerned, really, with the whole planning process. We went to great lengths a number of years ago to include the planning commission. We had five expert people added to that, didn't have a vote, but they had say. Then we had, every two weeks, someone came in and presented everything from the far right to the far left. We had farmland preservation people, we had builders, we had everything else going in this thing. Then we came up with a master plan, and also the people who were on that did the crossroads. So they had a lot of history, a lot of good people working on that thing. The first couple of projects that come up, it's all thrown away. Now, one of the things pertaining to this specific thing, and that was that some years ago, they were going to have an underpass. It was down the railroad tracks from Patterson Road, but it was supposed to be there. Okay, the monies were allotted, there was an account. When we left this thing, when I left the planning commission, we were to have an underground roadway somewhere between, I shouldn't speak of Santa Fe, Stanislaw, and Sierra. The reason was, is that there's only one roadway for emergency vehicles, and that's the overpass. And if some train hit it with a double-decker or something like that, we're out of commission. So the idea was, is to have a connector to connect the cannery with the downtown so that people could go back and forth, and we could get a real vibrant downtown in addition to that. Now we're saying it's only going to be a pedestrian overpass. Well, you look around downtown and see how many people are walking. Would they walk from there to down here? No, they're not going to do that. So what are we doing here? But we seem to throw out all the recommendations of this expanded committee, all these people that testified over a period of a year on how to do things in town. Same thing with the subdivision out here. It was supposed to have been more compressed. The other end of town was supposed to be more open, and it's supposed to accommodate a higher density. And the first thing comes along, we create a PD, give the guy license to do anything he wants to do, and a real PD wasn't for that, he was to do some other things. And so anyhow, I'm a little upset with this thing. I don't know where the money went. It got melded into the general fund and lost, so there's not the specific designated money for that. But it just seems like the, all the expertise we had, which were from the top-of-the-line people, is sort of going down the drain. And how are we going to connect the cannery? How are we going to give another access to the other side of town with a pedestrian overcrossing? Doesn't make any sense.
Do we have any other comments from the public?
Mr. Ramon Bermudez from Riverbank. On the same matter, was the talks or heard the people that goes to the skate park that it was going to be destroyed and taken over. And now that I hear Mr. McRitchie saying correction, there is between Sierra and Stanislaus, which is over from the park, it's more likely that a little spiky park that is there that might be taken away if that becomes true, because it's right on Stanislaus. And the part of the project like that is so much more expensive than other things that are more necessary for the city. I will ask you to please, I beg you actually, I'm not demanding yet, but I beg you to consider other projects that are more important for the safety, for the security of the city, like those lights are bringing back again. Start thinking about it, and it will be more useful. Thank you very much.
Any more comments from the public?
I'm a little confused because I was at the last meeting, and it was my understanding you were considering, you were continuing the public hearing along with this. And you had gendized this tonight under public hearings, to continue the public hearing as well as the other part till May. So are you saying you're going to vote on it tonight? You're not going to do the public hearing, or what? I'm confused what you're doing.
They had the public hearing, they're not going to vote on it tonight, and they're going to consider it May 12.
But it was my understanding, when you voted to continue it to May, you voted to continue the public hearing as well.
No, there's always public comment, but it wouldn't be a public hearing.
It was gendized as one. It's confusing, the way it's being handled, totally.
Well, the problem is, we, correct me if I'm wrong, I went back and looked at the minutes, and the public hearing was closed, so you couldn't continue the closed public hearing.
Yeah, it was closed, but then when they voted, I was, thought when they voted that they included public hearing back in it when they voted on it, after the mayor closed it. The other issue is, just as a general reminder, I asked you a question regarding conflicts in the infill opportunity area, and you said you weren't going to respond to it that night, so just to let you know, I'm still waiting.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public? City manager, do you have any comments on?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Councilmember Campbell. In regards to the comments provided by Mr. McRitchie about the planning process, certainly appreciate the hours and hours and hours that were dedicated to the preparation of the downtown specific plan, and the changes that have occurred over the course of the last seven, eight years have been considered, but in no way does it diminish the, a lot of the work that went into the plan. I think the vision of the plan is there, I think the heart and soul of the plan is there. We may disagree on some of the small changes that have been made in light of the dramatic change in the world economy and the dramatic change in terms of the fiscal condition of the state of California as a result of the recession. And so some of those changes are based on market and changes that could not have been anticipated when they were doing the planning work for the downtown specific plan. We will discuss, we can discuss this in more detail on May 12, but we'll certainly be noting the comments. In regards to the underpass, that is financially, the, an underpass is, would almost make any project, it could potentially compromise development in the entire city because of the cost to do that. And so that is one of the reasons why there was a recommendation for an underpass, in addition to the fact that the public safety, both Consolidated Fire and just Sheriff's Office, Stanislaus County Sheriff, has indicated that they really do not need an additional transition for emergency preparedness in this part of town. They really need it in the southern part of town. So that's an incredibly important consideration, and I certainly appreciate Mr. McRitchie's comments to that because he has been very involved and very active, and his commitment to this community is second to none. So with that, I certainly appreciate his comments and look forward to having more discussions on that. In regards to the continuation of the public hearing, you know, every item we have is public comment, and while there are some legal conditions around public hearings, the fact is that at every meeting, this meeting, the next meeting, there will be public comment that will be taken in, there'll be minutes of that, the city council will consider that, as will staff. Immigrants to conflict regarding the infill projects, that, I'll leave that to our city attorney. We do not see any conflict with the infill projects. This is a general, this is a planning document, a general plan document that we're asking the council to consider. And the only direct conflict that we have there has been by Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez due to the fact that her business isn't in the downtown specific area. But... But again, we will, we will be discussing this in further detail on, on May 12th. It is the recommendation of the staff to continue this item for further discussion on May 12th, and at that time, we will ask for the, the second, the adoption and second reading, as, as well as we'll be recommending the city council adopt the resolutions.
We need to make a motion and agree to that as a council, correct?
Yes, would like the council to make a motion, request us to make a motion to continue these items to May 12th. Is, is that meet what you need, Annabelle and Tom?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'll bring it back to the council, and what our city manager says, and we'll proceed from there. We need a motion.
I'll make a motion that we continue this till the May 12th meeting. I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to move the, move it to May 12th.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Motion passes three, zero.
We're ready for new business. Item six point one, accept the report on status of the LRA budget for third quarter of fiscal year 2014, 2015.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez and members of the city council, and members of the authority, local redevelopment authority, this time Melissa Holdaway will present an overview of the third quarter budget for 2014, 15. And also, our executive director, Debbie Olson, is also available to address any questions regarding this particular report.
Good evening, Vice Chair and Board. Tonight I bring you the third quarter budget report for review on the revenue and expenditures from January 1st through March 31st. Our revenue from the Fund 197, which is lease hold, the total revenue that came in third quarter was 505,00684. There's a slight reduction from the second quarter, and I can explain that in another slide. Fund 197 expenditures, the salaries and administrative expenses, and some of the professional services are the 10% match for our OEA grant. So those were the expenditures that we had for this quarter. Facility operations and maintenance, we have almost, we're on the back end of the electrical infrastructure, and the transformer should be on by the second week in May.
Question about that one, real quick.
Yes.
Can you, I know we've talked about it before, but can you refresh my memory what the fire suppression maintenance was again, and what difference from the assessment view?
Okay, the fire suppression maintenance is the maintenance that's on the actual fire suppression system out there now. It's just the annual maintenance. I think there's a five-year maintenance contract that we had to fulfill, and we're in the process of repairing all of those through that. Okay. So our total revenue was 505,000 with our expenditures of 618,527. This deficit is directly related to the AQH bankruptcy that was filed on February 19th. They had a past due balance owing as of March 31st in excess of 170,000. This includes utilities and propane. They also have a past due February lease payment that's also included in the pre-bankruptcy. This balance may be reimbursed at what terms and when, we aren't sure. It's going to be up to the bankruptcy trustee. The good thing is, is that we have been appointed to the creditors committee, and we have taken on a more active role in the day-to-day administration of the debtors' reorganization. Essentially, we have positioned ourselves to play a vital role in the debtors' reorganization of Chapter 11. In the meantime, this situation has proved, asked for a good opportunity to review our processes and our procedures, and update our language, our lease language, so that we don't, so that we can protect our capital assets in the future, because this has affected the capital assets, our cash on hand that we have, that is money that has to be reinvested into the site. So that will be affected, you'll see that in the year-to, year-end budget, the, the actual numbers that, that's been affected by that. The good thing is, is that they, as of February 19th, all of their current lease and utility payments have to be paid on time. Fund 198 is our OEA grant. We've received 395,000 for the year. We're in our third quarter, which we've expended 86,000. What we, what we expend, we get back 100%, so it leaves us at a zero balance at the end of the quarter. Fund 199 is our ESCA number one. We are working on cleaning the last few presses on the site, and then that will be zeroed out by the end of the fiscal year, and hopefully closed by June 30th. Any questions?
I have a question about Fund 198 OEA grants.
Sure.
Other services under professional services, the 31,500, just a quick example of what may be included in that.
Okay, that is our electrical study that we're having done on the site. It's to help improve where our electrical systems are going and feeding which tenants and things like that. So we're, we've just started that. He's been extremely busy with the transformer, and he's working on that study and have it, he'll have it to us by June 30th, and we'll bring that to you.
Okay, thank you.
I had another question, too.
Sure.
On the sale of personal property, I know we were expecting a revenue of $500,000, and so far, we've only got 5,500. Are we looking good in that area? Do we have the stuff cleaned up so we can sell? Kind of where, where are we in that process? I thought we'd have a little bit more revenue from that by now.
So we can't actually sell any personal property until we have bills of sale. The bills of sale come when we sign the memorandum of agreement. What we have included, why we have that 500,000, is we have $400,000 in an escrow account that we can receive, well, once we receive the bills of sale. And we also have pledges from tenants who want to buy equipment as soon as it's available. So, no, we haven't collected any of that, and we don't expect to until we sign the MOA, and that's in the army's hands. We think it's a realistic number at this point?
Any further questions? Do we have any questions from the public? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council for action or further discussion.
I move that we accept the report on the status of the LRA budget for the third quarter.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion to accept the LRA budget, and a second, may we have a roll call vote, please? Thank you.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Chair Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Motion passes four, zero.
Item six point two, a resolution of the city council and the city of Riverbank, California, adopting the 2014 Annual General Plan Progress Report, as well as the 2014 Annual Progress Report of the General Plan Housing Element.
Mayor, members of the city council, this evening, this report will be given by David Niskanen, who is a member of the staff of JV Planning and Associates. And so at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Niskanen to provide the report to you.
Thank you so much, Vice Mayor Martinez and council members. In general, the general plan annual progress report is submitted to the Office of Planning and Planning Research, as well as the Housing Element Annual Progress Report submitted to the Department of Housing and Community Development. In short, each jurisdiction must prepare and submit the annual progress report. Usually it's done in April, the deadline is actually April 1st, but there's a 60-day kind of leeway, and we thought that this day would be a good day to bring it to you. And it goes through the general plan implementation measures, and we provide a report on the status of implementing those measure, those implementation measures, as well as the housing element policies and programs. Some highlights include, in 2014, the, we went through a few general plan amendments. The first was a general plan land use and zoning compatibility matrix. And that is a, it matches the general plan land use designation with the corresponding zoning district. It's a vital tool for developers, as well as persons, people of the public, to understand the matching distinction between the general plan and the zoning code. In 2014, you, you folks also voted and approved to redesign or, and amend the annexation strategies in the general plan. Initially, the annexation strategies covered a large footprint of acreage, and we toned it down to be a little bit more realistic in this current economic climate. Also, for the general plan amendment, we also went through and reclassified the general plan designation on various properties. The intent was and is to match the general plan and the zoning together to achieve consistency. And we went through a survey and identified sites, and then went through that full general plan amendment on those properties. Most of these were mixed, actually, all of these were mixed-use properties, and we reverted back to the commercial properties to envision their realistic, realistic properties. For instance, the Galaxy Theaters is being one. We also went through a zoning update to establish the mixed-use ordinance. And if you remember, during the general plan update in 2009, there was a general, a general plan land use designation of mixed use, but no corresponding zoning district. So we drafted the zoning ordinance and presented it to you, and it was approved, and that's going well so far. And part of this report, as well as to report on the development in, in the area, in the city, and most notably KB Homes here on Oakdale Road in 2014, we processed 30 building permits for them, and we still continue to process building permits into 2015. This report is limited to 2014, but we also expanded it to include previous years, because there hasn't been a general plan and housing element progress report submitted to those department agencies thus far, since that, since 2009. And another notable development is the Dr. West Planning Office on Oakdale Road, includes a 6,000-square-foot professional medical office building, right next to the, the Galaxy Theaters in that area. So today, we're asking you to adopt a resolution approving the general plan and housing element annual progress report, and also authorize staff to submit this report to the Office of Planning Research and the Department of Housing and Community Development. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council? Further discussion? No? This is a public hearing. Could open it up to the public for any comments, questions?
Well, I just went blind reading all that stuff. Just a couple of comments on it. On one, it's on page 27 of one of the documents, but I think it's page 53 overall of the, the presentation, the hundred pages, or whatever there was. But it, it talks about assisting extra low income, low incomes, so on and so forth. And this is just back to this thing over here, that being approved. That was part of the reason for that, is to have a higher density. The, the whole time we were talking about this, it was higher density, building businesses with apartments up above, the same thing for the cannery, and same thing for out on the, I guess that's the east side of town. So have the smaller lots, make them more affordable, help with lower income. Instead, we've popped that part of it open to those only with larger incomes. Another thing on table A2, page 60, might help, you had two units as being rehabbed, and I'm not sure if you can use the housing authority or not, but we rehabbed 30 of them. And in reading the two that were rehabbed, a lot of the things that were done there were done also with the housing authority. So if you're reporting to some federal bureaucracy, and you put two in, you could maybe put 32 in. I'm not sure how the housing authority properties would relate to that. But anyhow, we did update 30 of them, and it was last year instead of 2008 to 2014. It was actually 2014. I'll leave it at that, I've said too much already. But anyhow, that might help. I don't know if that would help or not, but it, it might help.
Thank you. We'll take a look at it. So note it. Thank you. Any other public comment?
I wanted to know if it is included on the plans that they have of the new building of housing in the area of Sierra and, what is the other one? Santa Fe and Claus Road in that area? Does it, does this, any report includes anything on the plans of housing there, of building houses there?
Oh, you want to?
I'd be happy to respond to that. If you'd like me to do it now, or at the close of public comment?
The close of public comment. We'll get back to you in just a few moments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment? Any further comments? Okay, so we'll go ahead and close the public comment. Jill, go ahead.
Great, thank you, Vice Mayor. And so in regards to, again, appreciate the suggestion on how do you potentially include the work that was done by the housing authority in this document, and I know that David will, will take that, that into consideration. Appreciate that suggestion. In regards to this particular document, this particular document deals with the past and what's been done in the past, not necessarily what the plans are for the future. And so this is, is really just a summary of what has already been done, not necessarily what's going to be happening in the future.
Thank you. And I'm glad to see that we are reporting our progress. We have done a lot in the city, and so I'm glad to see that we are doing what we need to do as far as getting this report out. I'll bring it back to the council for action.
I just have one comment. Are we, can we do anything with this resolution before we know if we can include or not include 30 houses in that?
Yeah, but would it?
I'm just wondering, if we make a resolution to accept this report, it doesn't include the 30 houses that he was talking about. So can we do anything on this with or without those 30 houses? Does it make any?
We can always go back and amend it, I guess, would be the way to catch that.
May I make a suggestion? You can tell me if it, it works or not. Is it my suggestion would be if the council would like to approve it with, with the understanding that the 30 houses will be included to it if they are eligible to be included? And make that, that small change to the resolution, is that workable?
Because I'd like to see those included, and those, if we can, include those in those.
So is that your motion?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make an emotion to accept this resolution for this progress report, and if we can include those 30 houses, that would be my hope.
And I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to approve item six point two with amended as needed, and a second, and then we have the roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Tucker?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Motion passes four, zero.
Item six point three, resolution approving regional solid waste disposal plan memorandum of understanding between the city of Riverbank and Stanislaus County.
Yes, Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez and members of the city council, this evening, Kathleen Clique will present the staff report in regards to the proposal to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the county for solid waste disposals and recycling services. In regards to that, we also have Robin Boral here, who is a member of the Churchwell White legal team, who worked very closely on this, the preparation of this agreement with the city of Riverbank, as well as other cities that Churchwell White represents. This is one of those opportunities where we had some economies of scale. In addition to that, I would like to clarify, as we go into this discussion, that this is for services with the county related to the landfill and meeting our state requirements for recycling and diversion, and reporting our activities in regards to that. It does, it has nothing to do with the actual collection of waste by It does, it has nothing to do with the actual collection of waste by Jilton. And so, I want to make that clear, that this has, it's a, it's a, it's a related issue, but it is a completely, it is separate as well. So, the contract with Jilton is a completely separate item from the contract with the county that we are asking the city council to consider tonight. So, Kathleen?
Thank you, Jill. Good evening, Vice Mayor and members of the city council. So, tonight, I'm going to go over the Regional Solid Waste Disposal Plan Memorandum of Understanding between the City of Riverbank and Stanislaus County. The recommendation tonight is to approve the Regional Solid Waste Disposal Memorandum of Understanding between the City of Riverbank and Stanislaus County, and authorize the mayor to execute the memorandum of understanding. So, some background information on the city's relationship with the county. In 1994, Stanislaus County and the cities of Riverbank, Seres, Houston, Newman, Oakdale, Patterson, Turlock, and Waterford, so, all the Stanislaus County cities, entered into a MOU to achieve the waste reduction and diversion goals specified into the Integrated Waste Management Act of 1989, and we know it as AB 939. So, AB 939 mandates local jurisdictions to divert at least 50% of waste from the landfills. AB 939 establishes framework for solid waste planning, facility and landfill compliance, resource conservation, and waste management operations. Through this, the county agreed to prepare the initial planning documents and ongoing reporting requirements to the board, which are very lengthy and very time-consuming. The revenue to fund the AB 939 and household hazardous waste services was derived in part from tipping fees to the waste-to-energy facility. In 1999, Amendment 1 of the MOU was executed to provide for payment of the city's share of the costs for these services. In 2001, Amendment Number 2 of the MOU was executed to extend the term indefinitely, subject to a 30-day notice of termination. So, in June 2001, all the cities got together with Stanislaus County and formed a joint powers agreement for a regional solid waste planning agency. The purpose of the agency formation was to allow participating cities to just, to share their diversion credits and prepare one planning document for the entire region, instead of individual ones for each of the cities. So, in discussions with the county, last year, the county initiated some discussions with the regional agency cities to work toward the goal of sustaining a regional solid waste partnership to direct the disposal of the majority of waste generated locally to either the Cavanta Waste-to-Energy Facility or the Fink Road landfill. Through these discussions, the county has proposed a new Regional Solid Waste Disposal Plan Memorandum of Understanding between the city and Stanislaus County to replace the original AB 939 MOU. So, the new regional agreement will implement a regional solid waste disposal plan to support the continued operations of the Fink Road landfill and the waste-to-energy facility, ensure sufficient solid waste is delivered to these facilities, and provide regional AB 939 and household hazardous waste services. It forms a 10-year commitment from the city to guarantee delivery of a portion of its solid waste to the landfill and waste-to-energy facility, and establishes a 10-year schedule of tipping fees to be paid to the county. The term of this agreement would be from June 1, 2015, to June 30, 2025. The extension, there's an additional five years if mutually agreed upon. Termination is a 90-day notice required. Force mera allows either city or county to cancel agreement due to future changes in law that affects landfill operations or landfill diversion requirements. Guaranteed delivery of solid waste, no less than 40% of the city's monthly acceptable solid waste. And guaranteed waste-to-energy facility tonnage, the city shall deliver at least 3,352 tons annually to the waste-to-energy facility. The tipping fees, the waste-to-energy facility, starting in 1516, is 3,378, and that will be increasing, looks like about 3%, but it ends 2024, '25, at $43. And then, the Fink Road landfill is $26, beginning in 2015, 2016, and increasing to $29 by '24, '25. So, the AB 939 program services, the county, so, the county to provide and maintain all AB 939 services on behalf of the cities. Household hazardous waste programs, the county agrees to provide and maintain the program. The county has also allocated $2 million in rate stabilization funds to partially subsidize the lower tipping fees that we see here. So, recommendation background, so, by request of the county's chief executive officer, the city managers were asked to submit a letter of tentative agreement by March 16th, which the, all of the cities have done that here in Stanislaus County. The tentative agreement was signed with the understanding that the actual MOU would not be finalized until it obtained each city's formal city council approval. And through the past month, each city in Stanislaus County has been bringing this to their council. Waterford, Houston, and Seres have already signed theirs. I know Turlock is bringing theirs to their council tonight. So, this agreement will only work if all the cities sign on and contribute to this. The agreement fixes the tipping fees for the Fink Road landfill and waste-to-energy facility at competitive rates, and city staff will work with current and future contracted haulers to ensure the obligations are met. Financial impact, so, the city does not anticipate the agreement will have any financial impact on the city. We made sure through our negotiations with the county, because we had already gone through the Prop 218, and we've already increased our rates and changed our plan for the residents, we did not want to entertain going and increasing those rates again. So, the city's commitment is 40%. There are some cities that have a 50% commission, some cities that have to provide 80% and 90%. So, we're at 40%, and, and that's where we felt comfortable, to where we did not have to increase costs to our residents. So, the tipping fees established by the agreement and the 40% delivery of acceptable solid waste to the waste-to-energy and Fink landfill will be incorporated into the city's existing and future franchise agreements for solid waste disposal services. So, the recommendation tonight is to approve the Regional Solid Waste Disposal Plan Memorandum of Understanding between the City of Riverbank and Stanislaus County, and authorize the mayor to execute the memorandum of understanding. So, I'm here to answer any questions, if you have any comments.
Can you, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, sure? Okay. The tipping fees, I'm not quite sure exactly what that is. Can you further explain that?
Yes. The tipping fees, basically, it's a gate fee, so that when a truck comes with their, with their garbage, and they go to dump it, there's actually a fee they pay per ton. So, that's what that, that fee is.
It described, well, they disguised the name of it, huh?
Yes. Tipping.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a question. We are guaranteeing 3,352 tons annually.
Yes.
So, do the Jilton trucks pick that up and take a certain amount to that? Or how do they calculate that? How do we know that's getting there?
They, we get a report from Jilton. Jilton will have to do reporting, and the county is hiring someone to do a lot of the tracking, so we will be notified if there's any issues there. Before, we've had requirements to the landfills, and Jilton has always had the reporting and has always made sure that we met our requirements. So, we've talked with Jilton. Jilton has seen this agreement. Jilton was comfortable. We worked with them on the 40%. They were comfortable with that, and that's why the city manager made sure that we didn't budge from that 40% requirement.
We do just have trucks that are taking certain things from here over there, and they're then being marked as?
Yes, yes. You're welcome.
So, this includes items that are, like, left abandoned on the streets, you know?
Yes. There's a large list on, on the agreement on page 2, under acceptable solid waste. Garbage, trash, rubbish, branches, leaves, grass, a variety of different items, beds, mattresses, so, it's all included.
Very good. Any other questions from the council? This is a public hearing. Do we have any questions, comments from our public?
Ramon Bermanus, again, on this last part, this was, the question was going to come about the, she says, so, the pickup of mattresses and, and buck springs. Is there a day that they pick them up, or is there a call that we had to make to a certain phone number? Or, they've been asking me, some of the neighbors have been asking me about it, because on Morel, over there close to Coffee Road, they have a bad habit. Some people have the bad habit of abandoning, including sofas and, and love seats, and there's nothing to love about those when they're dumped like that, but, and also mattresses and buck springs. The same way over here at the railroad, across from Roselle, changes to railroad of Parisone. In the little alley there, then, there's a lot of times I have reported that in the years, that they have a bad, a bad habit of abandoning that, these items in there. And I wanted to know what number to call, you know, and then, to make it a lot easier for them not to dump them, but just to call that number and have it legally done.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll have Ms. Jill to answer that after the close of public hearing. Do we have any other public comments?
Charles Neal, 2312, Realverted Drive, Riverbank, California. Years ago, when the Fink Road landfill come in and everything, when we negotiated all types of contracts for that, we made sure that the City of Riverbank retained its right to dispose of its solid waste anywhere it so desired. Do we, are we still maintaining that right? Are we giving up 40% of that right to Stanislaus County? In other words, we're entering into a contract for 10 or 15 years with Stanislaus County, telling them that we will provide 40% of our solid waste to them. So, we have never had that before. We've never entered into a contract where we gave up our right to dispose of our solid waste anywhere we wanted to. You know, I don't understand why we would do that now, because we still, we still need to have the, and I think you said, what, you had a 90-day, 90-day pullout, you know, if you, if something come up. But we still need to, to make sure that we, some way or another, pin it down to where we keep close, because you might laugh, but, but garbage is a, is a money-making amenity. I mean, it really, it really is. You can, you can, you make and lose on it. And the citizens of Riverbank deserve to have the lowest rates possible, and, and I'm not debating the rates, because you've done an excellent job. But I just want to make sure that, you know, that we still retain that right to own it ourselves. We never did give it up, and, and we shouldn't today. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Edward Jones. So, a couple of years ago, I think there was a discussion on, on the garbage situation. Far as I know, Gilton is taking care of the City of Riverbank, far as garbage is concerned. Are we having an intruder to come in, or what's Gilton going to say when they find out we're going to give the garbage to somebody else? Like Mr. Neal said, there's a lot of money in garbage.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Can I close our public hearing?
I will start with backup from our city attorney, Tom Hallinan, and Kathleen and Robin. So, first of all, to address Vasdey's comment, in regards to that, Jilton has participated in the discussions in regards to this agreement that we're proposing with you. They've been actively involved and provided some invaluable insight. So, they will continue to be our franchised hauler for collection and, and responsible for collecting the waste and disposing it at, at different locations and, and recycling certain pieces at their facilities. So, Jilton continues to be our franchised hauler, and, and Jilton is a part of this agreement and, and works with the county with us as well. And has been a very good partner in this, and, and Jilton has been an incredibly good provider, and I would like to compliment them, actually, publicly. We do have the lowest rates, I believe, in the county, and they have been very responsive to issues. Which leads me to Mr. Bermanus's comment, which I appreciate him bringing up, the, the fact that we do actually have special item pickup as part of our most recent rate adjustment and structure. And so, individuals can call Jilton to make arrangements to pick up large items. So, whether it be mattresses, or furniture, or anything that might not be recyclable or, or acceptable by the Salvation Army or some other charitable organization, they do have that opportunity through their rate. It's already paid for, and I believe it's two a year that they get. I do not know the number off the top of my head, but it is Jilton, and it would be on our website and their website. Anybody Googled that, they, they would have that, and probably on their bill as well. So, we appreciate that, and any opportunity to publicize it, because that is really a valuable service to help maintain, keep trash from building up in backyards and frontyards, and, and to prevent as much dumping as possible in the public right-of-way. That service is available. In regards to Reverend Neal's comments, we're related to the retention of the right to determine where the waste goes. He brings up an excellent point, and that, that was, that was very wise of the council to preserve that right to determine where, where trash is disposed of, because there are different rates associated with different landfills. The situation that has come up, though, since AB 939 and the evolution of recycling requirements and state requirements, is that those requirements are quite onerous, and it has become incredibly a very complex subject. Simple trash collection and disposal has become, you know, the need to recycle 50%. We anticipate that that, that requirement will go up. They have, the state continues to refine and narrow what qualifies as recycling and what qualifies as an ability to meet that diversion rate. And so, this agreement with the county does, does limit us, for as long as we're in the agreement, to, it makes a commitment that 40% of our waste will go to the county facilities. So, in, in, yes, we are giving up the right to, to determine where 40% of the waste goes. We are, we are retaining the right for the 60%. What we get by making that commitment of committing the 40% is we get guaranteed landfill space, which helps us in looking at long-term development and meeting needs for any new development in this, in the city, which is an important component. It also provides services for helping us meet additional services and additional options for us meeting the AB 939 requirements, which are the state recycling and diversion requirements. And we can partner with the county that has much more sophisticated and vast resources available to them, not only for reporting and administratively, but actual programs that they can make available to the City of Riverbank, as we continue to strive to meet the goals and meet new goals as they come about, which we, we fully anticipate. So, there is a trade-off, and it's a trade-off that we, we've really struggled with over the last few months, a lot of the cities have. But we believe that the agreement proposed to you is sort of the, really, the, the best solution available to the city at this time, and that it, it provides us enough opportunities to choose a different route if it, it looks like it's really not workable. But it is, at this point, it is staff's recommendation that the city council approve the MOU in light of the circumstances that we face today. I'd be happy to address any additional questions with assistance.
I, I would just like to add that, in addition to everything that...
I would just like to add that, in addition to everything that Jill mentioned, one of the benefits of committing 40% of our solid waste under this MOU is that there was the 10-year schedule of tipping fees, and this was something that, in our conversations with Gilton, they actually, it's things like that, we have a 10-year schedule, they like clarity, and they like knowing that the tipping fees, which was mentioned in the presentation, are subsidized, so they're lower. So the county is using, you know, part of their rate stabilization funds to give a partially subsidized fee, and that fee is spread over 10 years. And so, you know, our franchise hauler appreciates clarity, and that was a big benefit to the MOU. So we are giving up something as far as we're guaranteeing where a portion of the city's solid waste goes, but we are getting it, the city is getting a tangible benefit as far as clarity and subsidized tipping fees for the next 10 years.
I'm sorry, can you introduce yourself?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Robin Verall, I'm Attorney of Churchill White.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I know you, but. I saw some puzzled looks on our public's faces, so I wanted to make sure we know who you are.
Apologies.
Thank you.
And I'd like to thank Robin for being here and giving her a chance to be introduced to the public, along with David Niskin earlier this evening, we do have a couple of new faces, so, Robin, thank you for clarifying that and adding that.
Clarification, on page eight, it says termination, 90-day notice required. So does that mean in the new agreement that if we chose to terminate this, we could just give them 90-day notice, just because we want to terminate it?
We just get a-
That gives us a little more flexibility.
Some tremendous deal falls out of the sky, we give the 90-day notice and we're gone.
Okay, thank you.
To be specific, there's two termination provisions, there's one when it comes, if a change in law changes the relationship, then the agreement kind of urges the parties to try to work it out, and if they can't work it out, then they can terminate, and then, but even if there's no change in law, either party can just give 90 days' notice.
Right, that's what I want to clarify, thank you.
I have one question, if there's, and I don't know if you wanted to answer the question, Robin, but if there's, if the citizens find that there's dumping on the side of the road, let's say mattresses, or couches, or what have you, who do they call? I just, this is sort of a public service thing here. Do they call Gilton directly, do they call the city, who will refer Gilton out to that site, or how does that work?
I don't think illegal dumping is covered in the MOU, the MOU does cover a program for household hazardous waste, so the county will, part of its, as part of this agreement, the county will provide, I think twice a year, for every city that's signed on to the MOU, they'll have a household hazardous waste program. But I don't believe the MOU covers illegal dumping, so that would be something that would have to be taken up with Gilton.
So none of the cities, I guess, proposed that question about illegal dumping during these discussions, right?
Yeah, it's something that didn't come up, it's, yeah, it was not addressed in my discussions with, you know, our, the collective city managers, or with Gilton, so.
Usually comes up when we have our individual negotiations.
Oh, okay. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, so I'll bring it back to the council for an action.
I make a motion that we adopt item 6.3 as stated.
A second. Okay, so we have a motion for item 6.3 and a second, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Campbell.
Yes.
Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Tucker.
Yes.
Mayor, Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Item 6.4, resolution approving the water conservation officer job classification and authorizing the salary range for said position to be included in the city of Riverbank's compensation plan.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez and members of the city council, this item that's before you this evening is related to the very serious drought, of course, that the state of California is facing, and recent actions by the state to impose stricter guidelines and to impose even more reporting requirements on this, on the city. You'll note that the last three items all have to do with meeting state requirements, and this one is no different. In addition to the, much of what we're dealing with is, we are noticing people are becoming much more aware of the drought, and so in looking at how do we, how do we help the residents conserve and find ways to conserve, and how do we meet the state requirements, it was proposed to create a position using already budgeted funds to improve water conservation. In light of the Modesto B article calling it a water cop, and now looking at the word officer as being, I can see where they may have gone there. However, I have to say, from a staff's perspective, we always saw this more as a person who would be, be helping, reporting, providing public information, not a water cop, but somebody who could help navigate some of the complaints that we get, complaints about the city, complaints about neighbors, and how to help people meet the city's water conservation ordinance, not being a person who would be doing citations, although that would potentially be a role. But the idea is for information and helping navigate some of the issues that we're finding. So a little bit of background, and I'll speak to the existing situation that we have and what's prompted this recommendation. People may recall that in January 2014, Governor Brown proclaimed a state of emergency due to ongoing water shortages. In April of 2015, the governor issued an executive order asking for a 25% reduction in water use. Cities have been asked to enforce their water conservation ordinances and seek ways to reduce water waste, and that has been well-publicized. In addition to that, the state water board is set to schedule this, consider this matter May 5th and 6th, and they are actually now using the governor's executive order to bring back some additional recommendations, and in fact, have created nine categories of use. And where the city now falls in is the city of Riverbank, based on its usage in September of 2013 would be required to meet a 32% reduction, which is very significant. So the governor issued an executive order, the state water board is actually looking, looking at ways to implement this, and that might be even more onerous than what the governor suggested. So as a part of that, they are asking for additional reporting, monthly reporting that we have to do already for our water uses and consumption, but now they're asking for complaints, citations, anything that the city is doing, so they can monitor what is going on, and whether or not cities are actually taking steps to reduce their water usage. So in addition to that, because of all the publicity, we are noticing increased vigilance by our public, which is a very positive thing. People are aware that there's a drought, they're aware that they need to conserve water, and as a result of that, we are getting 15 to 20 complaints a month about water usage. Oftentimes, it's people seeing people on their street, sometimes it's public lands, sometimes it's school district lands, of water that is being wasted. And those, those are coming to the city, and we appreciate people's concern, and we, our neighborhood improvement officer has responded to almost 70 in the last four months, and we are in, we are in the wettest time of the year. We anticipate that this is going to continue as people turn on their sprinklers, they deal with summer, and that, and so in looking at that, of realizing that in order to address this, not only just to deal, deal with inquiries, and to, to help people understand what the situation is, is that in order to be able to maintain other neighborhood improvement activities through code enforcement, vehicle abatement, responding to people who are, I mean, we really needed some additional assistance. So the city budget includes $25,000 for water conservation. So what we're asking the council to do is, is authorize staff to use the money that is already exists in the budget, and use that towards creating a temporary position, this would not be a full-time position, meaning, you know, 52 weeks a year, 40 hours a week, it would be almost full-time or full-time for the summer season, it would not be benefited, it would, there'd be no benefits, no perks, it's temporary, part-time, staff members have, you know, if it's not working out, it's, in its very short term, there's no long-term commitment made. What we would anticipate is hiring a position if the city council approves it, bringing them on for the summer, and then evaluating how it works in the fall, to determine whether or not it would be worth doing over a longer period of time, or next summer. So I do want to make it really clear that we appreciate the concerns that people feel like, gosh, is this, is this a water cop? That's not the idea. We want to facilitate neighborhood communication, communicate neighborhood cooperation. We do not want to fuel dissension in our neighborhoods. Fundamentally, it is up to the individual residents and individual people to get along with their neighbors, we can't control that, but we certainly want to do what we can to encourage that, not discourage that. So the last thing we want, we just want people to be aware, and be helpful, and to work towards that. This is in no way designed to be a water cop. So with that, we are asking the city council to create a position where it would be involved with educating residents, doing community activities, being available to the public via phone, as well as events, helping support myself and Michael Riddell, in terms of their public speaking, coming to for the council, and also to kind of just being that person where somebody calls and says, hey, there's sprinklers going on in a median, or their sprinklers are going crazy somewhere, that they can go and they can talk to, hey, you know, did you know that your sprinklers were going off in the middle of the day? You know, we take the approach that most people want to conserve water, sometimes they don't know that sprinklers are broken, the city doesn't know that sprinklers are broken, so the eyes and ears of the public to help deal with those is really critical. So this person will be able to respond to those, that is our intention. In addition to that, be able to help us, you know, watch some of these new requirements, and help us fulfill the reporting requirements of the state. Again, the proposal is to use money that's already in the budget, there's no additional appropriation needed, and this would be a temporary position. So at this point, it is our recommendation that the city council adopt the resolution approving the water conservation officer and the job classification. If you'd like to give us some room in this, and give us authorization to change the title, I would welcome that, and then that maybe we can just make some small changes, so water conservation, or another title that might be more appropriate, we could, we could adjust that. But again, it would be using the existing budget. Does that give enough legal flexibility to us? So that is staff's recommendation, and be happy to address any questions.
I have a question. In the, our document that we see, it says this will augment current staff to help the city enforce our current water conservation ordinance after business hours during the week of the weekends. Will this person be working on weekends and after business hours?
Yes, we would anticipate that they'd be available particularly on weekends, and in the evenings when people are out and doing that, there would be a flexibility in the scheduling to be able to enhance, to be more available to the public.
I have another comment. I've looked over the objectives and the duties of this particular person, I'm not sure they can achieve it in a four-month period with education, patrolling, and things that are there, and I think we had a hard look, very, if we're going to be practical, the way these objectives are laid out for the duties of this person, I'm wondering if there's, how much of this can actually really be achieved, because he's got a plan, this person's got a plan to develop water conservation policies, plus inform the public of it through workshops and other things, yet this person's going to be working on the weekend and patrolling. You see where I'm coming from? I'm not sure if some of what we have here is achievable with what we've set up, and that bothers me just a wee bit. So I would ask us to consider what we're putting on that this particular person, or maybe revise it, because I don't think this particular person, even in a four-month period, can achieve some of what we've laid out for him, goal-wise.
You know, Councilmember, I think that's a very good point for the council to consider. Realistically, in a job description, we, you put on kind of any potential duties that might be a part of it. Realistically, the focus is going to be education and responding to resident complaints in a way that, again, helps, helps facilitate, you know, one that the community knows that we're serious, and being able to educate people on a more, on a one-on-one basis as well. A lot of the materials that we need to have are available from the state level, so it's more just publicizing it. So there could be, you know, it could be somebody spending an hour on one area and, you know, 20 hours in a different area. So it just gives us a range of what might, those responsibilities might include it. I agree with you, I don't think that we'll be able to, actually, I don't think what is laid out there is achievable in, in years and years.
I agree. I think you're overloading the four person.
So we are, so we will, we will do, we will do what we can do within some of these parameters.
Well, I think too, that a lot of work has already been done by some of the city staff, I mean, in, you know, like, starting in educating the residents and developing some of our policies, I think that a lot of that work has already been done, so this position probably will just expound on what's already been done, and just further let people know. But I am in, in agreement to changing the title. So, and I'm not, I don't, right now, at this point, I don't have any suggestions, but I think that that will help us to get the message out that this is something that's really needed for the city.
Maybe coordinator, or some, we'll, we'll look at that and soften that a bit.
I also think in fairness, because it is written down there, and since it is written down, that maybe we should zero in on some of those objectives and make them more workable for the four-month period, because I know that you're saying it could be a part of it, but if I were trying to take this job and looked at that, I'd probably run the other way.
I, I would say I expect that we will have a report at some point in time after this, you know, person gets on board.
Yes.
So we know what's going on, what they've been working on, what has been accomplished, so.
And the information about requirements, the rules, if you will, will be on the website, right? And in our utility bills and things of that nature, so we're assisting this person with getting the information out by supporting them in that way.
Definitely, definitely.
My only comment was, and concern was about the budget piece of it, and you answered that quite clearly, and I think that's a very ingenious way of solving a couple of issues and using the money wisely, that is out there already for conservation, so I can, I really appreciate, you know, thinking of those and using those creative ways. I personally kind of like water conservation coordinator myself.
That's a good word, I like coordinator.
But I really think if we're using it from the water conservation fund, and that's where the money's coming from, that the water conservation should be in the title of this too, so, and that's really kind of where our focus is. That's my two cents, thanks.
Thank you. So I'd like to open up for a public comment.
I have a warped sense of humor, as you know, but water conservation officer, the initials for WCO, he's a wacko. I strolled about three miles, probably a mile up and a mile and a half back, and there were three blown sprinklers. Two were residents, and one was a school, so I stopped at all of them, and they were very anxious to hear what I had to say, and I'm sort of unhappy to report that as of five days later, there's still gushers out there. I took them and actually showed them, and told them what they had to do, one of them, the thing just unscrewed itself, that was all, you just screw it back on, but it's not my property, so I didn't want to do it. The other one blew the lid off and couldn't find it, and the other one did the same thing, just the whole thing just sort of blew off. So I think the wacko guy, he could go by and, you know, get the complaints from people like myself, and they're not a complaint, but, you know, these things happen. And I notified them, or I didn't, and you may want to do some follow-up. And I think that the position, first of all, I'm all for it, secondly, I think the position will morph as it goes along, you're, you know, if all these things go on at night like they're supposed to, this guy's not going to be out at night, but sometimes early in the morning, or whatever, and same thing with the weekends, they go on, you have a Sunday freebie day, and so on, so it's sort of tough, but I think it's a good deal, and I think we'll learn as we go along. Our neighborhood, I'm really surprised, but we used to get a flood coming down the street in the gutters, and I used to have a bucket, and I'd go out and then scoop it in my flowerbeds, and I can't do that anymore, it's bone dry, and the people have started fixing their sprinklers, and they're changing their runtimes, so that they put it on for five minutes instead of 15, and so the runoff is reduced, but I think it's making an impact, and I think that the publicity for this guy, or gal, is a big thing. If people know that you can call in, it's an easy number, it's a special number, maybe, or whatever it is, it'd be very helpful. And we've had different park hose over the years. And we've had different park hosts over the years, and they all have the same duty, but some of them are deputy dog and others are just smooth as silk. And the people love them to death, even though he's telling them, you're an error here. And others, they get mad at him. So I think the personality, you wouldn't want me, you wouldn't want Charlie.
Ladies and gentlemen, Ramon Bermudez from Riverbank. There is a notice that I saw on Mr. Odom's bill for the water and garbage and, what is the other one? Solid waste. And in it, it said that Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays were allowed to water the lawns or your gardens for odd numbers, addresses. And Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays was for even numbers, addresses. And I don't know whatever happened to that, but I made a couple of complaints when that started, and it's a special number, and they even had it wrong, so they had to recorrect it and go through that. But when you're billing the water, and you are obliged to go by this, because everybody's community is going to benefit out of that, why can't it be once a month, the billing, so you can control it better? How much difference was in gallons, that if it was an unusual amount, then you should go to that person and say, you were with notice on this and the fine is $100, you know? And I'll go, you don't stop. The second time you do it is $200, like that. You know, if it is, let's say, 1,000 gallons more than what you were supposed to use during that month, and it will be a lot easier to control on that wasting or overusage for that matter, if it was billed every month, because you can see the difference, more than every two months, well, that's too late for the last month. You know, every month you will be able to see what was the usage and what was the wasting, why? In another note, I had two different people, there was one was washing his car and another one was washing his big pickup truck. And today's newspaper, there's a, excuse me, there's a suggestion about the washing of cars on the driveways to have, to make sure that the person that is going to be enforcing this, to say it that way, to make sure they have a nozzle, that it has a control of on and off nozzle, rather than just leaving it, you know, throwing away while they're sopping and all of that stuff. And on different tips that I saw also in the city of Riverbank, different tips that they put in there about how not to waste water. And there was one of them, for example, of the washing of the car or not washing it, give it to the car wash, and you don't spend as much water. And I have for my landlord, has maybe six, eight, nine, about a dozen units that I know of duplexes, and I suggested to him last year in November, December, to have a half a gallon of plastic, you know, of liquid with water in it inside a toilet tank, a regular-sized toilet tank. And then he took it away right away, because I wrote and added the number of gallons that are wasted each time that we flush that water. And he just put half a gallon, and I figured out something like, let's say, 4,000 gallons that you save a year, but not flushing that much, half a gallon more for flushing. And then I added for him, he immediately, the next day, he was asking me to fill in these bottles with water, and he'll take them to the different units. And it's just one little one, but look at how much you really end up not wasting. And like he added, somebody else could use that water. And so I don't know how would you like to go on to this. I'm included on not being interviewed for this, because these two people that were washing their cars, they didn't really like it, that I called to their attention. What is it to you, one, I'm a concerned citizen, and it's my water too that you're wasting in there, you know? It's our water, it's everybody's water, so. He says, what is the next thing you're going to do? Put a meter on my air that I breathe? I said, we don't go that far, I say. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think the monitoring of the usage is really a good thing, if there's some way to do it. PG&E tells me I can go on anytime, I can see my comparison to other houses of a similar nature, I can do it every day. The guy supplies my ink, tells me every day, you've got too many pages, you know, this and that and anything. It'd be nice to know, in just a general way, maybe comes out with a water bill, is what is an average use? What should we really be aiming for? If you have a good conservative thing, you use 400 gallons. If you're over, at 600 gallons, you're over the average or something. It's going to be tough, because people with 10 kids, it's going to be a lot different than me and my wife, and I don't take showers ever, you know, and just ugly. But I think that with these other things, we really watch our power bills, and we can see when we're going to Tier 2 or whatever. And if there'd be some way, even if it's just in a gross way, to let people know that, gee, you're way over your limit, or way over the average, or way over what your neighbors do, it would be helpful to them, say, gee whiz, I didn't know that, you know? I don't know how many gallons I use. So that would be a good thing. The smart meters, they can tell you instantly, everybody, and we don't have the money to do that kind of thing, but I think that there may be some way that they can take all the total thing and divide it by the number of residents or whatever, and come up with some kind of number, even if it isn't home size or whatever. But it'd be very helpful to know what it is, because I don't know. I mean, I think I'm doing a good job, but maybe I'm not.
Thank you.
I'm not speaking against the water conservation or anything, I'm all for that, but I do have a concern regarding the financial part of it. The $25,000 is coming out of the water fund. The rate payers, the city bills the rate payers, what it costs them to provide the water service under Prop 218, that's revenue from the water fund. So what you're saying is all of these tasks, which look somewhat, most of them, a lot of them look like it's general benefit to the entire community, but it's all going to be paid for only by the rate payers. And that's a big concern to me. I don't think that's right, I don't think that's fair. I think if you're going to have a program like this, you need to spread it out, because it's not just rate payers that are going to benefit from this. Some of these tasks, like going to court, working with outside agencies, I don't think that under Prop 218, that should come from the rate payers. That's one thing that's missing in this report, is the justification to use Prop 218 water funds for it. You've got a rate study in the works. If you're going to put this on the rate study, you're going to have to justify it, and I would like to see you justify it before you vote on it. The third thing that concerns me on this is last week, the appellate court came down with a ruling on tiered water rates under Prop 218. I think before you spend $25,000 out of the water fund, you might want to see what the impact is going to be to that fund first. You may wish you had that money back.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments?
My name is Edward Johnston. I live across the street from O'Pryans Market in the Mubble Home Park. If you're looking for somebody to be wacko, there's a lot of people in this town that know my nickname, Fast Eddie. It would be an easy job for me, because they would call me as they see water dripping here or there. But I think your idea of changing that title is number one, because people would frown on that title. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Tom, okay, closing the public hearing. Tom, do you think that we should wait, or?
I think you can proceed. As Ms. Howard also said, you know, we're going to be looking at this, and it's very fluid right now. We're going to have more regs coming down from the state. And the other thing to think about budget-wise is that as we have to conserve, we're going to have less revenue in the water fund. So there's going to have to be a complete relook at this. And we've still got, is it next week that the state comes down? I think with some additional regulations for us. So I don't see a problem with proceeding. I think down the road, we're going to have to relook at some of these things, though, to be practical and to comply with 218 as we go forward.
And this position is just one of many regs that we have to comply with?
Yes. I'm not done.
Okay. Yeah, something too.
First of all, I do think that we need a new title for the position. Second of all, doing a little bit of quick math here, we've got $25,000. We haven't allotted how much of that we're going to put to this part-time position. I'd be comfortable knowing what the maximum is, because it is a part-time position, and by my figures, we shouldn't be using all of it. Thirdly, I really would feel more comfortable if we zeroed in on our objectives, because this is a part-time position, because I do think that we've overloaded the job expectations, even though they might not do all of what's there. And fourthly, you know, the money, as I said, is important so that we know exactly how much of that $25,000 we are going to spend. Personally, I would like to see us do a little bit of revision on this in some of the ways that I suggested, bring it back at maybe the May 12 meeting or another meeting, after we polished it up a little bit from our discussion here. I just don't think that it's zeroed in enough for whoever's going to do this job, and we need to clarify exactly how much money we're going to spend on it, because we've said it was $25,000 allotted. I know we're not going to spend the whole $25,000 in four months, because that person would be getting a terrific salary. And so we need to look and clarify some of these things in my mind's eye before I think we, you know, push it through. So it just needs to be cleaned up some. I'm not against the position, I just think we need to clean it up some so that we know exactly where we are with it.
Was that a motion?
I'll make it. I motion that we revise the title and look at the hours, the pay, and the objectives in the position, so that it's more specific with what we're getting on item 6.4.
Is there a second?
Rather than give a specific date, we'll bring that back as soon as we can.
I guess I'm a little, I'm sorry, I'm always the one that's unclear about a motion. It's not for the fact that I'm not listening, I just didn't get it. I want to, just can you repeat it one more time? I want to make sure I know what you're talking about. You just want this revised? So are we voting on it, that we go ahead and accept it revised, or you're just wanting it revised?
No, I want it revised and brought back to us, so we can see the revisions and see how much money we're actually going to spend out of the $25,000 for a four-month position, and clean up some of the duties that this person has, because I feel the duties are not all reachable and attainable, to make it a more practical position when we present it for employment. And, you know, even look at the time that the person's going to spend weekly, because that's important for a lot of different reasons. I don't think we want to get into benefits and things. We just need to clarify and clean up several things before I'm comfortable with passing it at this point. I think we need it, I just think it needs a little bit of clarification. So that's what my motion said.
Just keep in mind, I think the May 12 meeting is jam-packed, it's going to be a late-nighter, and May 26, we're down, we're dark. So if we want this person to start for the summer, we're really, we're more under a time crunch, I think, than we realize.
I can't agree with you on a time crunch. If I don't know what I'm voting for, it's not clarified. I know time is important, but I really feel that we need to clarify the position.
I mean, this is, this is one of those, and clearly, it was, it was brought before because we are concerned about the summer, but if there's not a level of comfort in adding that, you know, if you'd like a little additional information, one of the, you know, operationally, I don't, I think, again, purposely, we tend to provide more information in a job description than anybody might actually be able to accomplish, to be able to provide leeway based on changing circumstances. The money is actually already in the budget, probably will be, be close to that eventually for that, as well as publicity materials and such. It is, certainly understand the concern about having it be over ambitious in the name of the title, so it doesn't look like it really is a water cop. So, you know, we can, you know, we will, we will do what the council directs us to do. If, so, what is the level of the comfort of the council? We will make it, we will make it work.
I think we need to spell out what you said there, out of the $25,000, so much is approximately going to go for publicity or development of this and whatnot, for salaries and whatnot, because we've had some comments about that money tonight, also from the public.
Point of information, so a motion was made. I don't recall hearing a second.
Right, that's what I was going to go back to. No. So do we have a second? So if we don't have a second, the motion is dead.
Correct.
So can we make a second?
So can we get a new motion?
I would like to make a motion that we approve item 6.4 with the understanding that we would change the title of the...
Is there a second?
That's discussed previously.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion for approval of item 6.4, changing the title. And a second, can we have a vote, a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Campbell.
No.
Councilmember Jones Cruz.
Yes.
Councilmember Tucker.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barbara Martinez.
Yes.
Motion passes 3-1.
And Vice Mayor, members of the city council, what we can do is address some of the issues that've come up tonight when we come back, move forward with that, but address some of the questions about exactly, but through the budgeting process. And I do agree with a lot of the comments made tonight. This probably will evolve as the situation evolves and as needs of the community evolve. So I appreciate the flexibility with that, and we will, we will look at changing the title, so we can make sure that we're communicating really what the intent is for that, so.
All right, just keep us abreast of the position changes and so forth. Thank you. Item 6.5, consideration of a fireworks application from Enox High School Music and Guard Boosters.
Vice Mayor and members of the council, this evening, I'd like to ask if Doug Stucker is in the audience tonight? Does not look like it. Okay. So this is an item that was added to the agenda at the very last minute last Thursday in response to an inquiry from a gentleman who was the Enox Boosters vice president. With, with that, because they weren't, this is a community group that wanted to place a fireworks stand at Clarabelle and Oakdale to raise money for Enox High School, which many Riverbank kids go to. I, and they were late, they were beyond the application period of March 31st, that I went ahead and put it on the agenda for consideration this evening. Mr. Stucker worked hard to provide some information to the city in regards to that application. I did receive a phone call from him this morning indicating that the agreement that they thought they had with Broman Development and Save Mart at Clarabelle and Oakdale had fallen through, and that he, if he got any news today, that he would be here tonight to be able to present this item. So at this time, there really is no item to consider, and so there is, there is, it is, it is not, it is not necessary, so recommending that it be pulled.
Thank you.
Do we have to motion, motion to vote on that at all? Okay.
Okay. Okay, item 7.1, staff comments.
Yes, so, Mayor, members of the city council, there is a community forum on Thursday evening at California Avenue School. This will be an opportunity for the public to come and look at the proposed maps for district elections. As the council is aware, the city is looking at different options to put the voting for the City of Riverbank City Council into districts to make smaller areas of consideration. That meeting will start from, is it sort of an open house from 6:00 to 8:00? So even if you can't be there at 6:00, you can come and check that out. It is going to be very informal. In fact, we've asked to really just keep it community-wise, so I know that you're not going to be at those meetings, so you can...
going to be at those meetings, so you can be able to take all the feedback in, but we just want to encourage the community to come out, speak to the consultants, speak to staff in regards to giving their comments. An interpreter will be available, and we are, again, it's at California Avenue School, it's in the multipurpose room, the address is 3800 California Avenue, again, 6:00 to 8:00, this Thursday, April 30th, and we encourage people to come out and participate. In addition to that, we've received a lot of inquiries about what is going on at Clarabelle and Oakdale as they start grading that site. So while the final decisions on what, what businesses will be at that center have not been finalized, what I can tell you is that it will be 9,500 of retail space, that the developer has said, while it's not all finalized, that it will be some new food options, sort of in the fast casual concept, that are not currently available in the City of Riverbank. There will be three to four, it looks like there'll be three to four businesses in that area, and we are really looking forward to the public announcement, which will come sometime down the road. So they are grading the site, it is, it should be very, very positive, that the building plans are very attractive, and so something to look forward to. So it's about, again, 9,500 square, square feet, probably four, four businesses or so, we won't know for certain until the plans are submitted, and when the plans are submitted, it'll be, it'll become public. But at this point, it's not quite finalized, so people can just be a little bit more patient, but at least we're seeing activity there. So that, with one final comment, Mr. McRitchie mentioned Whacko, in terms of the water conservation position, and I just have to, just, just because it's just too funny, it is me who is upside down in that bubble from Riverfest last night. So Whacko might be an appropriate, appropriate term. So just to show, yes, it is my, it is my leg sticking out of that thing there and what they, they did for me. So just in the spirit of fun, it was a great day, really kudos to Sue and Carrie, a lot of work went into it, and I just want to point out that the City of Riverbank is doing its part for the drought. We had rain the night before the parade, we had rain before Riverfest, the night before Riverfest, Riverfest last year, and we had rain the night before Riverfest this year. So apparently, we need to schedule more outdoor events, and the drought will be taken care of. So, anyway, it was, it was a lot of fun, and we look forward to doing it again next year. That concludes staff's comments at this time.
Thank you. Item 7.2, council authority member comments, council member Jones Cruz.
Thank you. I just have two quick things. I just wanted to thank the staff for a successful Riverfest. I had my grandson down there, and had to ride the train three times. So, before we get him off of it, loved it, it was really, it was really a nice day. And please thank everyone that participated and made that function happen. Thank you for at least addressing sort of, kinda, the retail space, because I get barraged every morning when I arrive at school, from several members of, of the neighborhood that I work with, what's going on in there? So I told them it was Tofu Express, there we go. Total fictional one, but then they stopped asking after that, and so. So anyway, thank you. That's it.
Councilmember Tucker?
Yep, thanks for Riverfest. I didn't get to go this year, I was planning to go, I wanted to go, and, but it was my daughter's birthday, and so we had plans, and we did that instead. But I really want to go next year, so that I can take my little granddaughters...
I rode the train several times.
And have a ball on the train, yeah, they love those, those trains. So congratulations on a great event, and we really appreciate it, even if I wasn't there. And I wanted to wish all the mothers in Riverbank a very happy Mother's Day in advance of Mother's Day, and remember, everybody, to honor your mother, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell?
First of all, I'd like to thank our staff in Riverbank, all the way from our managers down to every employee. They're always very busy, and they're doing just an incredible job in the Parks and Recreation Park, Marcella with finance and whatnot, and I'm proud to be a part of that. They're a good, hard-working staff, and it's great to work with you guys. Secondly, I'm very impressed with the number of comments we had tonight from the public, and that's good for us to hear. We appreciate hearing from you. We may not always agree with your comments, but we need to hear them, so keep it up. And I also like the civil way that you did it, so keep up the good work. And then also, I was there firsthand to see our city manager upside down. Quite a laugh. I suggested we leave her there for a while. But it was a lot of fun. We also had the 1919 fire engine out there, a lot of the kids were getting up, taking pictures on that, and really enjoying that. And it was quite a bit of fun, it's a shame that it rained a little bit, so the crowd wasn't as big, because a lot of people thought that it wasn't going to be bad out there, but the weather was really terrific. Last but not least, there's a lot of community things going on with benefits, we've got the omelet breakfast, the enchilada benefit that's being put on by, I think, the Women's Club, and then the tamale, tamales you can get through the Christian Food Sharing, the omelet breakfasts with the Historical Society. Those are all going on this month. They're not that expensive, and those, those charities would appreciate you buying the tickets for these functions, because the money goes right back to the public to give food, work for the Historical Society, and other things in the community, like the Women's Club, scholarships and other things for us.
Thank you. I just have a couple of comments, just to thank the staff for Riverfest also, it was, I had a great time. And also for the, the quality of the reports. Our reports come to us, and they're just professionally done, and we just want to thank you. Mostly everything is always clarified, and we don't have many questions, so just want to say thank you for that. Spring is here, so I encourage everyone to get outdoors, enjoy our beautiful parks, and enjoy the weather. But remember, we have to save water, we have to conserve our water. And I know the, with our position, that we're, we will be able to meet our state requirements, and these are not requirements, these are requirements that we all have to meet, everybody that's in the state of California, it's not just Riverbank, but it's all cities, and it goes down to every single city, every single resident, every single person has to do their share to conserve water. So just keep that in mind, and, you know, have as much fun as you can, but limitations on the water. And thank you. And I think that is it for the night. So I close our city council meeting, it's now adjourned. Thank you. No, forgot to say thank you.